The people that sit on all of these boards and commissions that have looked at this and say, maybe they just say it because they're not paying for it, but we've been in the business of securing open space for quite some time now, and we've done our due diligence. And if this is a similar parcel, then I think it needs to at least go the distance and have the people that are paying the bill make a decision on it. Any more comments tonight?
No, I agree with Mr. Wilson. I think this map lays out graphically how this ties in with the other properties we want to preserve. We've heard this presentation many times, you know. I am never in favor of the town spending much money. And I, yes, I agree, as Mark said, this is $850,000 in taxpayer money. On the other hand, in terms of what we would get in return by securing this piece of this extensive parcel, I feel it is worth sending this on to the next level. So I would be in favor of forwarding this to the Board of Finance.
I'm going to voice some concerns I have, and it's not about open space. I very much want this property for open space. I don't want to ever see it develop. I do have some concerns. When we did the Samuel Smith House, when we agreed to pass that on to the public, we knew where every dollar was coming from. We had gotten a commitment from the sportsmanship club. We knew what our contribution would be. I have a concern right now that we see bargain sale and fundraising. I don't know what that means. Granted, we've been elected to do things such as this, preserve open space, but if we're going to consider expending $350,000 of our taxpayers' dollars, I think I need to feel comfortable, I know where all the money's coming from. For instance, right now, the sale price is $1.225 million between us, and I know, I think New England Forestry has said they'll contribute 150. Did I hear something? Okay. But if we don't, the concern is what happens.
You're going to, this is going to be like any contract.
Steve, let me finish if I could. And, you know, you say the concerns have to be worked out before we move it, you know, after the public's had a chance. I think we have to work out the concerns before we pass it to the public. A lot of questions will come up at a town meeting, I think, as far as the details here. You know, one of the things I'm not worried about is taxes. I know, I'm sure the taxes are extremely minor for this piece of property. That's always someone's concern, it's coming off the tax rolls, it's forestry land. I'm sure the taxes are very tiny for this. You know, Mr. Mingo mentioned tonight that there might be some other resources to get money back and so forth like that, which is great to hear. Those are my real concerns, Steve. Not that I'm not, would love to have this as open space.
Here, if we don't raise the money, there's no deal. You're committing, the town's committing to $350,000. If we don't raise the rest, there's no closing. It's very similar to the mobile station, right? We move to the voters to say, based on the Shuret study and everything else, do we want to pay $650,000 for a third of an acre that's contaminated? That money, we drew down short term, we're paying interest on it. We've never bought it because there was contingencies in the deal. This deal is contingent on raising enough money to close it. You're not, we're never going to come back to you for more money. You're, we're requesting to move on $350,000, that's it. If we can't meet the rest of the obligations, there's no deal. You need to lead, you need to have some faith, right? Lead by example. If you think this is worthy, move it forward, move it to the voters, and if we fall flat on our face and don't raise the balance, it didn't cost the town a dime.
I'd like to get Town Council's opinion on this type of a situation. Mr. O'Connell?
Yeah, several things. One, there is a method of valuing conservation easements. So if there is an eminent domain proceeding, there is a method of establishing the value of a conservation easement on the date of the taking. And conservation easements are appraised. Quite often, they're appraised when wealthy people declare, put a declaration of conservation restrictions on their land, so they can get a tax deduction. And the tax deduction is calculated by reference to the value of the conservation easements. So appraisers do have a method of figuring out the value of a conservation easement. The interesting aspect here is that the grant documents provide that the state of Connecticut would be advancing $500,000, and the state of Connecticut, in return, would be getting a conservation easement. And the proposal is that the Town of East Lime would advance $350,000 and also get a conservation easement. The proposal is that the conservation easement be joint. I myself have never seen a joint conservation easement with the state. There has to be a memorandum of understanding with the state of Connecticut as to who would be enforcing the easement, at whose expense, who would call the shots on enforcing the easement. And I don't think the state would lightly give up the right to enforce that easement to a joint process. So that's something that's interesting. Clients don't like interesting issues, but lawyers sort of like them. That's an interesting issue. And that goes to the value of the conservation easement held by the town. If the conservation easement held by the town is a secondary easement, a subordinate easement, subordinate to the state's conservation easement, it might flow into the value of what is the value of the easement held by the town versus the value of the easement held by the state. Whether the state would be giving itself money, the state DOT would be giving the state DEP money if the property was ever taken, is somewhat problematical also. But conservation easements can be, can be valued. So on that side, I thought you might want to know that. What I have done, what I have done is I've taken the May 18 communication from the New England Forestry Foundation and undertaken to prepare a draft resolution, should anyone consider that it's worthwhile making a motion, and I will pass it out if you want to take a look at it.
Please do.
Ed, when, if this, if we move this forward tonight?
Thanks, Ed.
When does the negotiation of the easement take place, on the, at the purchase? And what if, what if the town couldn't come to an agreement at that point?
About the terms of the easement?
Yeah.
Yeah. I sort of got around that by the last sentence of the first paragraph. And I will read it. I will read it for the, with your permission?
Please do.
I would read it. If someone wants to make this motion, it would be to resolve, oh, there are two different types of financing proposed in the May 18 memo. One is by bonding. So it's a relatively small amount to go to bond, but you could always decide to issue a bond to pay for this. And if you decided to do that, your resolution would be to direct the town's bond council to prepare bonding papers. You can't do it tonight because, as you know, there's a big, thick sheaf of bonding papers that have to be prepared, and very elaborate resolutions which have to be passed by the various boards. So this one would assume that you'd be possibly considering using the Open Space Fund number 59, which is noted in the bottom of the May 18 letter. And the resolution would be to allocate the sum of $350,000 from Open Space Fund number 59 for the purpose of purchasing a conservation easement on property to be owned by the New England Forestry Foundation, consisting of approximately 166 acres with an entrance at 29 Goldfinch Terrace in East Lime. The conservation easement shall be in a form satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen and the town attorney. That's the best I could do tonight about that, that you would have, that you, the Board of Selectmen, would have to approve the form of it, and I would approve the procedure and the, and the requisites, the statutory requisites. That's the best I can do tonight, because we can't talk about the easement all night long. Also resolved, that the set amount shall not be paid unless and until other funds from the following sources are made available to the New England Forestry Foundation at the closing of the purchase and sale of the property. $500,000 from the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection, and $375,000 from private funding. So that, if that money is not made available to the Forestry Foundation on the date of the closing, the town would not be writing a check. Also resolved, that the foregoing allocation be forwarded to the Board of Finance for approval, and that the planning commission be requested to submit a report as provided in section 8-24 of the general statutes. That would seem to cover the requisites if you, if someone desires to make that motion.
I did have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One of those, right now, the price is $1,225,000, and it specifies here how the money comes in, the resolution.
Yes, that's why I tried to implement that.
Suppose, would it be possible for New England Forestry and the organization, the KSK Associates, to say, okay, we're having trouble raising money, we're dropping the price down to a million? Would that violate, could that, would that mean they'd have to come back and revisit it for a lower sum if that were the case? Or would that?
Well, I suppose that could fall, really fall under the category of a private donation, a private, private funding, giving up the right to receive X amount of dollars.
It could happen.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that come under the bargain price thing?
I don't know what bargain price means.
Bargain sale, I mean.
That's why I put it in this, this lingo. Bargain sale.
Would it also be possible, Mr. Mingo mentioned about the land trust possibly having some resources, if between the time this, if it did move forward, did go and get approved at, through finance and town meeting and a referendum, if it came to that, could that money be put into the 59, number 59 at Open Space for use for this?
I suppose so. If it fits into that, if it, if the town appropriates extra money to Open Space Fund number 59, that would have a larger balance, and more money would be remaining in Open Space 59 after the $350,000 were taken out.
Following up on that, there was also another grant that was applied for. I don't know if you guys heard back for it or not. Would that be, and if they do get that, is that considered private financing, even if it's from a federal?
I'm just, I'm just looking at fundraising by N-E-F-F, and I labeled that as private financing.
Ed, if I could have a?
I have a question. How binding is this resolution when it comes to town, the town meeting vote?
How binding? It would be to allocate the money under those conditions.
Allocate under those conditions.
And it would be forwarded to the Board of Finance, and if the Board of Finance approves it, it would be scheduled for a town meeting. And if the town meeting approves it, or if there's a referendum that approves it, it would then be binding upon the town, but the, the conditions set forth in the resolution would have to be met.
Perhaps I wasn't clear enough. If you vote the resolution as drafted by Town Council tonight, how binding is the wording of that resolution?
It's pretty binding, because that's the word.
I suggest a change in the wording, and that is that, because I don't want to be held as an organization to have you just private funding come in for our share of what we said we would raise, it could be other public sources.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Other grants elsewhere, so.
So we, that could be say private or public?
Private and/or public.
That's what I was asking.
Amen that, Ed.
Perhaps we can say, public or private funding by N-E-F, New England Forestry Foundation.
Thank you.
Okay. Could you give us that again, Ed?
Right at the end of the second paragraph.
Right, from?
Where it says $375,000.
From?
We would say $375,000 from private or public funding.
Other sources.
I'd like, I'd like to be a little more specific. We're the ones passing it, not.
Private or public funding received by New England Forestry Foundation.
Could I ask if that wording would hinder the organization in their fundraising?
Mr. Mingo's group?
No, if I could ask.
Oh.
I think with that change in language, it would give us enough flexibility. For instance, it might be easiest, it might be easier for Mr. Mingo's organization to contribute funds to New England Forestry Foundation, for instance. I just don't know how they're set up and, you know, what the preference might be of their particular donor.
Thank you.
I'll at least give you a structure if someone wants to make that motion.
I think we need a minute or so to read it again carefully. I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what it says.
Thank you.
Mechanically, I've been advised that the, the entrance to the land which would be subject to the conservation easement is not a 29 Goldfinch Terrace. I would have to rely on somebody else to tell us where the entrance would be.
29 Goldfinch is the legal address on the, in the assessor's office, but the point of entry for all the public access is going to be at the other end of Goldfinch where it intersects Cedar Brook.
So if, say, at the intersection of Goldfinch Terrace and Cedar Brook?
Right, yeah.
Or an entrance at the intersection?
Could you point that out on the map, Steve?
It's down here. Right down here. So that's where, in the state grant, we put some off-street parking, and that would be the point of access, and that's where it's, so 29 is actually this end, but it's just the, yeah, it used to be called Route I-95, is its legal address. Legal address, it's such a drop, it's a name that we just.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's just a reference. I don't want to, I don't want to put it at 29, because that's not the point that you would enter on.
We just, we pause somebody's.
You've got a conservation easement for your living room.
Yeah.
Yeah, the intersection of Goldfinch Terrace and Cedar Brook, Cedar Brook Road?
Cedar Brook.
Is it Cedar Brook Road or just Cedar Brook?
I think Cedar Brook Lane.
I'm pretty positive it's road, but.
Is it?
Road stroke lane, yeah.
Okay, one of the above. Okay. Town Council, any other comments you'd like to make?
No, other than, I assume you're not going to do the bonding route, and it would be the allocation from.
I, I'll open up the board, I.
I would think that would go to Board of Finance for consideration.
We have to have a resolution that is forwarded to Board of Finance, though.
Well, because it says from Open Space Fund, right?
This fund does say from the Open Space Fund, and I know there are resources in that, so.
Do we, we don't have Anna yet, do we?
Anna's on vacation this week.
Oh, well, that would be very inconvenient.
Kevin, what's the, what's the balance?
I think it's about $525,000 after the New England National.
Can you point out where the town's, what, have a very precise motion?
It's tunnel. Okay. And would, and would we do that after the Board of Finance gives its approval? We would have to do that before.
Initiates with you, and that's why you would have to be a very precise motion if you wanted it.
So we wouldn't, we would not be able to act tonight if we wanted to go to the bonding. That's not happening tonight. Yeah, exactly.
So what I'm saying, would Board of Finance come back to us with a recommendation as to how they would suggest we finance it?
Well, you can start all over with their, if they say no, try this way, we start all over.
Okay, but so, so we would be open to going that route if Board of Finance came back, but in order to move it to them, we have to do something.
Yes.
Okay.
You've got to start somewhere.
Thank you.
Well, I, do.
Just, just one more question. Steve, I don't think any of us are opposed to open space, but it is a large sum of money, and we do have to make sure that the town is protected, and I think that's all, especially Mark. Mark is new to this, he came in, and going back a couple of years, we had some presentations where we didn't even know, we were getting presented that property, so you have to understand, that's all, our concerns is we wanted to be as thorough and as diligent as we could.
I don't mean to get so passionate, no, I understand.
Okay. This is a process.
The other thing, and I know you've stressed this as well, that we have to make sure that we're going through all the due diligence, because of course, you do have another position in town.
That is correct.
Anyway. But I think it's really when we look at this land, it's immaterial, who owns it, it's part of a contiguous stretch that we do want to preserve, so if you're happy, I would like to.
Read that. Go ahead. With all its changes.
Yes. Resolve to allocate the sum of $350,000 from Open Space Fund number 59 for the purpose of purchasing a conservation easement on property to be owned by the New English, New England Forestry Foundation, consisting of approximately 166 acres with an entrance at the intersection of Goldfinch Terrace and Cedar Brook Road stroke Lane in East Lime. The conservation easement shall be in a form satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen and the town attorney. Also resolved, that said amount shall not be paid unless and until other funds from the following sources are made available to the New England Forestry Foundation at the closing of the purchase and sale of the property. $500,000 from the Connecticut Department of Environmental, Energy and Environmental Protection, and $375,000 from private or and/or public funding received by the New England Forestry Foundation. Also resolved, that the foregoing allocation be forwarded to the Board of Finance for approval, and that the planning commission be requested to submit a report as provided in section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second for that? Is there a second?
Do you say?
Is there a second?
He's asked.
Okay, okay. So made and seconded, any further discussion?
I'd just like to add, some of my concerns were, were resolved tonight, especially with the eminent domain with Route 11. My only concern is whether this town wanted to actually, the value of owning the conservation easement or owning the whole property, that was my thrust of my comments, not that we didn't, whether or not it's worthy of proposing. But I will, I will be voting in favor of this, but I do feel that there may be more value in the town owning it, but seeing this is what we have before us, I will, I will be voting to let the voters decide on that.
I, too, I have some concerns to overraising the additional funding, and I really want to stress that that really needs to be done, because with the Samuel Smith House, that was locked up. I really hope that will continue here, so, anyway. Any other comments? A call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're back in session to remainder of the agenda. The next thing on the agenda is a special appropriation of $7,600, the 2014 Farm Viability Grant.
Okay, would you make to move the following, or do you want to give some background?
Just a little background, it's a subcommittee of the Agricultural Business Committee, it's a subcommittee of the Conservation and National Resources Grant. Applied Farm has been awarded a grant in the amount of $7,600, and it's to promote local and sustainable agriculture in the Town of East Lime. And they plan to take various photographs, have brochures printed, and a website development, which is, you know, very nice to hear. And they want to have this information available for display and distribution at Celebrated Slime Day on July 18th. So is there a resolution to be moved?
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
Move the following. Be it resolved that it is in the best interest of the Town of East Lime to enter into contracts with the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. In furtherance of this resolution, the Honorable Mark C. Nickerson, First Selectman, is duly authorized to enter into and sign said contracts dated May 20, 2015, on behalf of the Town of East Lime. The Honorable Mark C. Nickerson, First Selectman, is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state of Connecticut in connection with said contract, and to execute any amendments, rescission, and revisions thereto.
Is there a second? Second. Any further comment or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously? I'm sorry if you waited for that all night, but thank you. And thank you for all your effort in getting the grant and all the stuff you've done to move forward. We look forward to the brochure on Celebrated Slime Day, too. Thank you so much.
Sorry about that wait, you know, we would have, if we had been smarter, we should have moved that up.
Yeah.
That's all right, now you won't have to be on the Board of Finance.
Oh, there's a second, there's a second.
To appropriate.
Yeah, they appropriate.
I want to hear that.
Okay, go ahead.
Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $7,600 for a 2014 Farm Viability Grant. Budget and revenue accounts to be titled as such in Special Revenue Fund 18 and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. The purpose of the grant is to promote local and sustainable agriculture in the Town of East Lime.
So moved, is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously? Now I think you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more, one more motion. Okay, the next thing is the authorize the First Selectman to sign a $20,600 grant with Connecticut OPM to connect to the Nutmeg Network.
Okay, move to authorize the First Selectman to sign an NOGA grant in the amount of $20,600 with CTOPM to connect to the Nutmeg Network.
It's been made, is there a second? Second. Second, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously? Moving on to, no one to finish business, communications, we have our folder, anything that might be in that. Ex officio reports, Mark?
I went to two, two meetings for Harbor Management, Shellfish. They're in the middle, this sort of commissioners, they're in the middle of updating their Harbor Management Plan. They have all their, they have it all written, it's being sent up to DEEP for review, so that's going to come back before them. It's pretty much modernizing it, it really has been updated since, I think, 1994. A part of that is going to be, there is an ordinance change, that there is an ordinance on the harbor management that this, that the Board of Selectmen approved years ago, and there are going to be some modifications. So that will be coming probably before this commission at some point. The other thing that came up was, the other notable thing to talk about was the National Guard was at the last meeting to discuss the exclusion zone outside of Camp Nyannick. They are planning to put a, off the property, 250 feet exclusionary zone.
Right.
They clarified a little bit, but there's, they clarified what it is, and it's essentially that boats aren't, people aren't allowed in there. They do have, they did sign a agreement with Wellsco to allow some transient clam, clamming to go on in there. But generally, they said if their plan is if somebody goes in there, they're, they have a private security force that would tell them, you're not supposed to be in there. There's, it's, there's going to be no arrests or anything like that, and if there was multiple violations, they would be contacting the harbor manager. But at the, at the meeting, there was some talk, some people have talked to DEEP about it, and they wanted, the commission wants to know how the Board of Selectmen feels about it, and there, there are some concerns with it. The area is only three to four feet deep maximum, but it's a good-sized portion, people that kayak through there. Anyways.
250 feet out, Mark?
250, I have a map, if I'm allowed to pass that around.
Is it going to be delineated in any way more?
Yes, there's going to be three buoys that are going to be marked, some of them are like 800 feet away, and it's going to be, the, the marking of the buoy, there was a debate on that, that's going to be decided by DEEP, and if, first of all, DEEP has to approve it, okay? That's not even guaranteed, because this is kind of new. So if DEEP approves it, then they will work with the Coast Guard to determine what the buoy markers will be, and they'll pretty much be exclusionary zone, is what it's been described to us. So if there's concern by this commission, they asked if we had a concern about it, to talk to DEEP, to maybe share our concerns with DEEP.
Actually, probably the best thing to do if we have concerns is to ask someone from the National Guard to come in, because there's heightened security now, pretty much at every base nationwide for a whole lot of reasons.
Yes.
It'd probably be best to get the National Guard's input.
Well, they were, they were, and we could have, they came to the Harbor Management yesterday to explain themselves, and pretty much they said, it's not, they really want it because if they do need it in case of, you know, upgraded terror threat or something like that, they'd have it in place. It's not necessarily, but they still have the right to.
Okay, well, we can put that as a discussion item for, I'll talk to him for an agenda item since.
Yep. I'll pass the town up for another one.
Oh, go ahead.
I've had several of the residents in the area speak to me concerning that they would not be able to walk along the waterfront, which traditionally has been able to be done, and I was wondering if this came up as part of the discussion.
It came up in confusion, because the, what we heard from the National Guard It came up in confusion because the, what we heard from the National Guard was, no, that would probably not be allowed. But there was a letter from someone else that, that was read that said that, that yes, it would be allowed. So there's actually still some confusion.
When I was still ex officio of that, that was one of the things brought up when there was, there was a major, very nice, came from the National Guard and said that for people that live right there, that they would try to accommodate them and stuff like that. You know, that there was that effort that they'd be opening. One thing, too, we have that joint land use survey study. This would be a great thing to...
That was brought up. Can we, can this be added to it? They asked me to bring that. And I, and I think the answer, yeah, we should.
I think that'd be a great place to remand this to.
That's the whole point of, to talk about how changes affect local area.
But I will say, this is not official until, apparently until DEEP approves it.
Which we, which we ought to, if we have issues, we ought to be expressing those to DEEP because they're the end, end all of this whole thing.
That's right.
And I would certainly talk to our elected state officials, our state senator and representative Jutilla, because this would have quite an impact on people who are used to using this area for recreation.
As it was pointed out a while back, is there's some good clamming beds right in that area, too. And could there be a way to make, yeah, people can come in and clam, but they can't come into sunbath or something like that, you know?
Yeah, and the other, the other part of that is, most of this is their hospitality area. Firehouses, all those people, the hotel is on this. I mean, there's nothing there other than gazebos and things where they have parties all the time, most of this area that they're talking about. And what is interesting is that there are houses that are 10 feet from their fence that they have nothing to do with.
Correct.
You know, that can't be exclusion by 250 feet.
Well, I think, you know, this, I talked to Mark, make sure Gary is aware of this and, because Gary's the one that's doing that land use survey, bayless thing, so.
Right.
Okay.
So there's something to...
Okay.
Yeah, it should be discussion down the road here.
Yeah. Now, the only other thing is afterwards, I came up to the Planning Commission. Mark, I think, was covering for you, and he had to leave early, so I covered the final hour of the Planning Commission, kind of by just walking, I kind of walked into it. But anyways, they, they did send their, they did vote on Scotchy Hills, which was forwarded to the, their recommendation to, that it's inconsistent, to the zoning commission, lengthy discussion on that. And that's been forwarded on to the zoning commission of the Runos. That meeting is tomorrow.
Right.
And then there was just a small, I think, approval of Verizon putting an antenna on the, I think it's the Nyanic.
Firehouse.
Firehouse, yeah. They did approve that.
Okay.
Are you going, you're going to be able to go to zoning tomorrow night?
Much to my chagrin, yes. Yes, I will be there. I would welcome the company.
I'll be busy elsewhere.
Okay.
I was going to volunteer somebody else.
Oh, right.
Any other ex officios?
I don't have anything.
Okay, just, I was at a parking rack, just a reminder, this summer, Monday through Friday, access through hole in the wall will be closed. You can't park and go through the hole because the construction equipment going through there is actually going to be blocked off in one of those, like, almost like a Jersey barrier. People have to access hole in the wall by coming down through the upper apartment cooks. Saturday and Sunday, it will be full access, fully accessible. But on weekends, weekdays, you will not be able to access hole in the wall through the park lot. You'll have to come down through above. That's it.
I just have quick zoning. It was mainly applications for renewal of special permits for outdoor dining.